The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to our town council meeting. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Adella, Chris Stetson.
Here.
Councilor De'Nony.
Here.
Mayor Kuzinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy. Councilor Papiero. Councilor Peoneso.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, your hand.
Thank you. Next, we have our audience of citizens. If anyone has any issue they want to discuss with the council or tell us about or yell at us or praise us would be better. Whatever you want, now would be your time. I see no hands, so we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and we'll go on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. We've two items on the consent agenda, a couple of donations to the library and to the police canine program, so we have reviewed them. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. On to new business.
Agenda item number one is to exercise the option years for Qualidime Quality Management Services for the VNA. Qualidime provides quality management and does certain quality control inspections and reports for the VNA. They're requesting that they, with the, the council waive the town bidding procedures for them. They provide a good service. Wendy Russo is here to discuss the, the agenda item.
Okay. Come on up for a minute, Wendy. Just quickly. We won't have too many questions, I don't think. How are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Good. So, we're gonna, so, we've been using these, this contractor before, right?
Yeah, we have, we're in contract with them. We've been for the last three years. And when they did the original contract, they put in two option years for years four and five. And we'd like to continue with that. They do a great job for us. They do our quarterly auditing, our annual reports. With all the regulatory changes, they, they keep us up to date. They provide education and keep us in compliance.
That's great. Part of their audit, they do, what do they, they audit like Medicare stuff, whatever?
They do. They go by the CMS guidelines and the, the federal requirements.
Okay.
And they audit our documentation.
Okay.
So they look at our outcomes, they look at, make sure that we're in compliance with all the regulations. And they do a quarterly, they do 120-day report, and they do an annual report and all that gets sent to the state.
Okay, great. And their prices, I assume is?
Yeah, it's, it's about $26,000 to $27,000 a year.
Yeah.
And I believe it's, it was staying the same for years four and five, were $27,000.
Okay. And that's pretty competitive with other contractors like them?
It is.
For VNA?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Does, I think the answer is yes, but I don't see it. Does this come from a budgeted amount? Does it come from a fund?
Yes, it's already been budgeted for.
All right, very good. Okay, any other questions?
But, it says education. I'm just curious, is that like PD for?
Basically, they do education for any kind of regulatory changes. We had a lot of new conditions of participation, regulations for CMS this past year. We have a lot of new ones coming down the road. They're doing some comprehensive assessment changes coming up January 1st. And they'll provide education for staff, they'll provide education to the, do the, train the trainer type thing, you know, at our request. But the other reports, the auditing, that's all within the package.
Right. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Take a motion on this?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures for Quality Management Services and exercise options four and five in the contract with Qualidime Quality Management Services. Continuing these current services in the best, is in the best interest of the Town of Berlin.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Number two.
Number two. The town, we had applied for a grant and the council approved us, our application for the grant. We had received funds for this. And we are negotiating with Amtrak to purchase the part, that spur that goes next to the property, what we're looking to develop as part of the TOD project. The next, Jim Mahoney's been negotiating with the Amtrak. The next, the next step in the process is to do an 8-24, refer this for planning and zoning review. So requesting the town council move to refer this to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thanks.
Chris Stetson's here to answer any questions.
So, Chris?
Yes.
Before you get started, I understand you received an award, but are you gonna, are we gonna physically get some type of award? We can?
I, I have an award, yes. I did not bring it up with me.
Okay. You mean you don't carry it around?
I, I'm not at this point. Actually, considering it's made of glass, it'd be a bad idea.
Ah, okay, okay. Well, I understand you received the award from the Connecticut Economic Development, Economic Development Association. And, you know, you were a board member?
Yes.
For them? So, I'm just gonna read a little bit since, we'll pretend we know what it looks like, but bring it, bring it at the next meeting so we could affect the?
I will do that.
But, Chris Edge, you know, he played an important part in the C-DAS this year when you stepped into the policy chair position midway through the year. Due to professional obligations, our policy chair needed to take a step back. Chris, without hesitation, stepped into the leadership role and excelled. He immediately took an active position with the legislature when they were in session, ensuring that C-DAS's voice was heard at the state Capitol on critical economic development issues like brownfields, workforce, tax abatements, and more. Chris also organized our members to write to our legislators and take an active role ourselves. He was in attendance at our board meetings, updating the group on timely legislative activity and reinforced time and time again that a big value to our members lies in the advocacy that we do at the state level, especially because we have some recent wins being a part of the TIF legislation and similar efforts that contribute to the economic development profession here in Connecticut. Chris, it's a joy to work with. Well, I don't know about that, but that's all right, we get that. Always a huge grin and a bear hug for, for me. This is the, this is the vice president talking here. So, we, you know, those are just some of the things that you did, and so we congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you and, great. We know, we love you, so somebody else loves you too. That's, that's good. So, appreciate all your hard work on behalf of Berlin, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. I'd been on the board for a couple of years, and then in the last 45 days, I decided to go neck deep, so I'm now the assistant soccer coach for my daughter's U-10 soccer team and an assistant scout master for my son's Boy Scout troop, so something had to drop, but it's a, a great group. It's essentially probably 40, 50 folks like myself around Connecticut who do this every day and have a voice, at least we try to, up in Hartford.
Great. Well, good job.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. So, what do we got?
Item number two. It was the 8-24 referral.
Okay, that's all we have to do, right? Right now? And this is, I mean, right, we're, this is the thing we're looking to, do we have a price on this?
Yeah, the, basically, we had negotiated a price with Conrail, but working with them right now, Jim Mahoney is, essentially, this allows us to move forward by state statute to the 8-24 process. And then, again, it will come back to this, this body.
Right.
Before we do anything.
Sir. There's some whole, we, we, we thought we had a price, and I think we have a price, but every time we get to the, as you can imagine, every time we get to just about the end point, there's another little curve in the, in the road. So we're negotiating a few, few finer, few of the finer points.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll take a motion on this?
Move to refer the matter of purchasing the Conrail spur that extends from the Amtrak main line at the train station to Old Brickyard Lane to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review pursuant to section 8-24 of the Connecticut general statutes.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Three?
Agenda item number three, it refers to property identified as 889 Farmington Avenue, which the town does not own. But we own the property behind it, which has some contamination on it. It's the property that was, that's gonna be part of the TOD. The contamination, we're concerned that there may be contamination under 889. We're asking for approval to apply for Brownfields program grant so that we can do a study of the property, potentially work, negotiate with the owner of the property to mitigate the, the issues.
Okay.
Just a quick addition. We had received monies from the state to purchase 861 Farmington Avenue. So essentially, this is gonna continue those efforts as well as potentially what's gonna happen with the rail spur itself. So essentially, if, if this, I think, is round 12 of the Brownfields, we're gonna put in the application, working on it right now. Again, it could be adjacent property owner, it could be other use of 889, but essentially, continuity efforts we have on the property.
Okay. Great. So we'll take a motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to file an application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for Brownfields grant for additional funds for property acquisition to mitigate groundwater issues related to 889 Farmington Avenue and for capping of the Conrail spur.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Agenda item number four is continuation of those efforts, and they're asking, we're requesting that you authorize a revision of the contract for Lorero Engineering. They're the consulting engineering firm that's been doing the workforce in that area. And we're requesting that you allow us to revise the contract to do additional work. And Chris is here again to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is related to the $200,000 grant we'd received from Capital Region Council of Governments. Their monies are directed from EPA. EPA does things slightly different than the state. Essentially, the, the two things here, and I know just what we need, more acronyms. The analysis of Brownfield cleanup alternatives, and then a community relations plan, and essentially, the rail's been working with us. It fits within the existing monies we have. So we're not going for more monies, it's just to change it so they can do this piece to help us through the process with this $200,000.
Correct.
And Alex, I apologize for it being so long.
Yeah.
All right, so?
There's two separate ones, right? In there.
You can do it all together, just if I'm gone.
All right, keep on rolling, Alex.
You ready?
Yeah.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Lorero Engineering to assist the town with analysis of Brownfield's cleanup alternatives, ABCA, and a community relations plan, CRP, to inform citizens about the project and alternatives considered with respect to installation of a hydraulic control system to prevent the spread of contaminated groundwater off the 889 Farmington Avenue site for a fee of $3,500 to be paid from the EPA, CRCOG, Environmental Remediation Grant Project account. And move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Lorero Engineering to provide an additional $3,000 for general consulting services for the 889 Farmington Avenue Brownfields project, of which $1,500 is to be paid by our insurance carrier and the other $1,500 from the state regional Brownfields grant project account.
Okay, thank you. Second on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Just a quick one. It says here that it's expected that the town's insurer for this project will pay half the cost. Do we know definitively if it's happening?
There's been email correspondence between Jim, Chris, I, and the insurer, and the insurer's on board with it.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Five?
Okay, agenda item number five, it's not about anything on Farmington Avenue. This is, the Economic Development Commission has recommended the town council approve a tax abatement for Tri-State Realty Group. They're looking to renovate a 12,000-square-foot building on Woodlawn Road, and so they're recommending that a tax abatement is part of our tax abatement program. And Chris is here, he's been involved with this.
This is actually my, some of my favorite parts of meetings is when we do this, because, I mean, we have success here in town. Tri-State Realty Group is actually the real estate owner of it, but it is, excuse me, Tri-State Testing Materials, a company that is relocating from Wallingford. Basically, a company that does testing for construction firms, everything from concrete, soil, and really do a lot of things to help the construction industry in which we're very, very talented at. So they're bringing a handful of employees up, and then part of the building will be available for lease. If you're turning onto Woodlawn off of the turnpike, it's the second building on your right, 60-74. It had been in a machine shop for a while, they're looking to do a beautiful facelift on it. And so I'm just very excited to bring this to you today, because they're making an investment both in jobs, but also in making this building a showplace.
That's great. Moving to hear from Wallingford.
Yes.
Nice. Good. All right. Any further questions on this?
Yeah. Does this fall into the same tax abatement as new construction?
It does, yes.
And this isn't new construction?
It is not, no. It's, it's basically, I think the building, maybe it's worth 400 to 500, they're putting another 400 to 500 in.
It's allowed under the abatement?
Yes, basically, the abatement would be on the additional value. So if it's worth a dollar today, and it's worth $2 tomorrow, the abatement is on the additional dollar in value. So it's, it's not a full abatement on what's there, it's just on the improved, the increased assessment.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Take a motion on this?
Move to approve a tax abatement for Tri-State Realty Group LLC for the renovation of a 12,000-square-foot building, 50% in year one, 40% in year two, and 30% in year three, per the town's tax abatement policy.
Like, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number six, again, is for Chris Edge. The Economic Development Commission has recommended the town council approve a tax abatement for 131 New Park Drive. Looking to, there's been an application for construction of a 9500-square-foot manufacturing space for Bud knee aerospace in Overhoe. And so the Economic Development Commission is recommending a tax abatement for the town's tax abatement program.
Very great.
Yeah, and this one is, this is, I think, probably the second or third time it's come before this body. Bud knee had started out a very small, family-owned business. This, I think, will take them up to about 70,000 square feet and about 150 employees. First building on your left when you go down New Park, behind the driving range. They continue to grow. They do work in aerospace, and they're looking to continue to grow, and this, again, is just a small tax abatement on the 10,000-square-foot addition.
Okay, yeah, they're a great employer in town, great family, been around in town for a very long time, so we're happy to help them out and keep them here. So, thanks, Chris. So, take a motion on this?
Move to approve a tax abatement for 131 New Park Drive LLC for the construction of a 9,510-square-foot expansion of 50% in year one, 40% in year two, and 30% in year three, per the town's tax abatement policy.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
No, I just, in addition to the prior one, I just wanted to echo what Chris said. I like seeing these, because to me, it shows businesses investing in the town, and it's a win-win, because we're getting more tax dollars, and they're getting a little bit of savings while they're building up. So, continue the good work, and congratulations on your award, too, obviously, well deserved, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I'm finding that the incentives are becoming a little crazy out there. So I think, especially if we can work with folks coming in, existing businesses, to help them to grow based upon our policy, it'd be great. Because I don't, I don't wanna have to fight against somebody else for a business that we already have. So I think if we continue doing this, and I greatly appreciate this, this body's assistance, you've been incredibly supportive of my efforts.
Thank you, Chris. And are we, this is, we're talking about looking at the tax abatement? Or, or no, we're not? That's a policy, right?
That's a, that's a different ordinance.
Different issue?
That's a different issue.
How are we gonna?
We, we're gonna discuss it at the Economic Development Commission level.
Yeah.
We will then make a recommendation, which will come through Jack's office, and then at that point, if we feel action be taken, it'll come to this, to this body. But right now, yeah, essentially, we need to look at it and?
Yeah, I know you guys talked about it last, the last meeting there, it was that, so that's great. But, but we don't need to do the whole ordinance thing, that's just a policy change.
It'll just be a policy change. This, the one we're meeting on Thursday is a different, different, activated program.
Yeah, that's the, for the seniors, it's different. Okay, well, that's good, we're looking at this, some good discussion at economic development last time, so. Do we do the?
We have a motion still.
Motion's on the floor, that's why we're in the discussion station. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. And you can bring in your, you know, the big monster award one night if you want, you know, happy to see it and present it to you officially, if you want. Up to you, we'd love to do it.
Can we tax it?
How big is it? Yeah. No tax abatements for awards, okay? All right, so now we are at the appointment portion here. The first one is, just going down the list would be, I'd like to just, no action on the constable one, I don't know that gentleman, I just would like to, I guess there's an opening for a constable. I just would like to talk to him, I don't know him, so we can just hold off on that one. The next one would be the Public Building Commission, right? Because we had a?
There's one on the library board, do you want to?
Library, yeah.
That's the first one?
Yeah, it's, it's not on the list, but it's here, right? It's in here, right?
Yeah, it's number one.
Oh, it is number one, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I missed that one, okay. So, library board, we had two people, right?
Just one.
Yes, there's two. Both of them?
Doing my stupid list, but anyway, whatever, okay. Yeah, one, one of them had, I think the gentleman wanted two, right? He was more interested in the, oh, here they are. He was more interested?
Me two suggestions, yeah.
The veterans?
Yeah, the veterans, and then the library board.
Right. The, the lady was, so, I would, you know, if you guys agree, you know, there may be a, from what I understand, there may be a vacancy on the veterans commission, so maybe we should hold this gentleman's, will often go for the lady, if you guys agree, we could nominate, have a nomination.
Okay, motion to nominate Lillian Lan for the Berlin?
Yeah.
Board.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations and take a vote on Miss Yulane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Congratulations on Lillian. We'll hold the gentlemen's for veterans, yeah, veterans, or, and maybe if there's something else he's interested in too, we'll see what we can do for him. Okay, thank you. Now we're on public building, right? Public building, we have one. Nomination Bart Bovee. Was in town a long time, obviously engineer, so we had, I guess, a resignation on a public building commission, so take a nomination.
Motion to nominate Barton Bovee for Public Building Commission.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And now, next we have the visiting nurse. Right, that's the last one, right? So we have David Varanisi, we have some openings, so we'll go ahead and take a nomination.
Motion to nominate David Varanisi for Visiting Nurse Association Board.
Thank you.
Can I just?
Yes.
It's gonna be for number 14.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. 14.
Motion to nominate David Varanisi for number 14, VNA, right?
All right, just the one on the list. Now, because the terms are all different, so I just wanna make sure that we do the correct term.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. All right, any, there are no, any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Or, if there aren't any others, so, we're good. Welcome, Mr. Varanisi, to the VNA. And that's it, right?
Okay.
That was it, right? Did I miss any? Okay. So, we are now on to our town managers' report.
The first thing on the town manager's report is the senior center, community center forum. We've scheduled that for October 8th at 7:00 at the high school?
November.
Excuse me, November. I look at?
The 8th, we missed it, we missed that.
I was, I'm fast, you know, we're just, we're quick.
That's the 8th at the high school?
Yeah.
7:00, same time?
7:00, correct. And we're gonna have that in the paper twice between now and then, and we'll be posting agenda shortly for it. I met with, I was meeting with Tina at the senior center today, we're talking about, you know, some of the work that needs to be done there. But as part of our discussion, she requested, the seniors through Tina had requested that if we would have a forum at the senior center, because they have, they have a hard time getting to the high school for these other forums. They'd like, they would request that we'd have it during the day, not in the evening. And so I told Tina that would bring it up to the council with their approval, I would go ahead and schedule a, a community forum for this, for this issue at the community center during the day at some point.
Yeah, right? Is that good? Some of us hopefully can make it, we'll try, we have enough notice. Is there a particular time, like, do it maybe around, how about around lunchtime?
Normally, we, you know, I was just invited up to give a talk at one o'clock recently, and I think Tina was today, I would think probably one o'clock would be, would be a good time. Kate would come up, we would, you know, take, we'd take, like a normal forum, we'll take the minutes and everything like that, but they requested if we could have it at the, at the-
Sure.
Senior Center. And I guess there was precedent when they were doing the police station originally, they did, they went around town and did presentations at different areas, so I think it's a good idea.
It is. So, when are we thinking? Do we have any thoughts?
You know, if we could follow up, right, the week after the eighth, maybe the week of, you know, maybe the twelfth, we could do it that week, that'd be a good time.
Yeah, probably after that, that forum, right, would make sense, right?
I think it makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so-
And typically, they invite us to talk on a Tuesday afternoon at one o'clock, I don't know if that, that would probably be the day of-
The day of the council meeting?
Yeah, the council meeting.
Okay. Because Monday's Veterans Day.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, okay, so-
Other than that, you can start getting next to Thanksgiving, I'd like to try to keep it closer to the-
So, is that okay? I know, you know, some of us probably can't make it, but the thirteenth?
That's what I'll shoot for, I'll send you an email, I'll talk to Tina tomorrow, and if that works, I'll, I'll shoot you an email.
I'll try and be there, and whoever else can make it, at the senior center, on the thirteenth, at one, if-
I didn't get the email that had all these meetings listed that we talked about.
Okay, we'll send you another one.
You know, restructure it with these new meetings and-
Yep, we can do that. I'll check with Christie to see why we didn't get it to you.
So, that, so, good, that, that's good. I'm trying to think of something, oh, so that's-
May I send to your home boss?
Council meeting that day, oh, yeah, we have another meeting that day too, huh? Okay, all right, that's, so hopefully that, that works out. Okay, while we're on that, so, that memo, that, there was, we got the ordinance committee coming up, right?
Ordnance committee meeting is Thursday.
Seven.
At seven, you have a playing downstairs. We have a playing fields committee meeting that same night at six thirty.
Oh, that was the other one, okay. Playing fields, I don't, I forget who's on, Peter, you are, I think.
I am, no.
Okay.
What's the date of that?
You're on ordinance too, right?
It's just, it's the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Yeah, October eighteenth.
But it's six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah.
Because you're on the ordinance too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so hopefully that's a short-
They should be both short.
You're on the ordinance too, right?
Yeah.
Can you make it? Okay, great. And Charlie, hopefully you can-
My butt should be short, right?
We'll get you off an email tomorrow morning.
I can come here for quick, you know, for a while.
I don't think the ordinance one has got, has that got a lot of stuff on it, or no?
No, two items, we have the building department fees, we had talked about trying to come up with a way of, we have contractors who are doing work without, without permits, and we've looked at ways of, either reach, when you talk with the state of Connecticut, they don't allow, the state won't, won't fine them, in their, in their statutes, they don't allow for fines, we're looking at ways of trying to come up with a way of encouraging a contractor to get a permit prior to doing the work. We'd like to be able to fine them or have some type of a penalty, we've been working with Jennifer Capola on this, so she's gonna come and give you some alternatives. I know that Frank has talked with the town of Avon, and they have, they have fees, they don't call them penalties, they don't call fees, I, I know Jennifer had some reluctance on that, she was looking at the nuances of that, so we'll talk about that on Thursday night, along with the tax abatement for, for seniors, and ways of structuring that too.
Okay, so, we gotta have ourselves, whatever's next, Jack, on your-
I have, we had, we had talked about the water control meeting.
Oh, yeah.
The water control met with Kensington and Worthington, I think it was a productive meeting, I mean, it was, I think probably the first constructive thing is that we're gonna meet, we are gonna meet from now on quarterly to talk about common issues, we're gonna look at ways of possibly being able to, you know, do some projects together, or look at being, some efficiencies. We're looking at different ways of being able to meter sewage better, so that we, we, right now, there's, there's an assumption that the INI, which is infiltration and inflow, is the same of all three districts, and that's, that's not always the best, but there's no way of measuring it right now, so we're talking about ways of measuring it. And then probably the most important, probably the most important thing that came out was that we're looking at, looking at ways of interconnecting the water system, so that we don't have pipe water dead ends, which are not good, because you chlorinate the water to prevent bacteria, and we want to make sure there's no dead ends, and then we circulate the water. But we are gonna continue the conversations, we're gonna be in a quarterly basis.
Was there any discussion of-
No. This was the first thing, was to start getting the meetings together, and work cooperatively together.
Yeah, because, so, maybe we start down that road, and maybe we can, at some point, talk about-
I think that's the path to go, is to start working together, and then look at the, look at possible consolidation at some point.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
We had a meeting today with the CCHD, I think you are aware that they are, they are going to be moving and consolidating their operations to Rocky Hill, so we will no longer have a, a sanitarium located in the town hall, so that office will become available. And we've talked about this many times, there's, there's pros and cons to this, I will tell you that, you know, being from the Northwest Corner, Torrenton area health district is located in Torrenton, has one office, and they service twenty-one communities, and I can tell you from personal experience with my own house, and also working with them professionally for more than twenty, twenty-five years, it has worked very well for the Northwest Corner, they do a good job, I think Charlie's gonna work hard to make it work for the four towns and the health district, there're gonna be some bumps in the roads, and I want to make sure you're aware that this consolidation's going on, they will probably do it in December. There'll be, there'll be a few bumps road people, used to coming in here seeing the sanitarian, I think just through some careful scheduling, and we're, we're working closely with them, that it should, it should work fine. And I think the residents will be, will be served adequately and professionally, I'm not, I don't have major concerns, as long as we continue the dialogue. I asked Charlie that once they had a firm date when they were gonna make the consolidation, to come and give a brief presentation to the council, just so that you could ask questions and understand what's, what they're doing a little better. Second part of that, we had a good conversation today, in that, I think Wendy's still here, the next thing we're going to do is, we're gonna have a joint meeting between the, the health district and the, and the VNA, there's, there's, there's some good possibilities that there should be, can be some overlap, and that the VNA can provide some services to, to the health district, and that which would be good for the VNA, so we're gonna have that meeting, I know that Christie's working on the scheduling, probably the next two weeks, we wanna get together, and Charlie was very enthusiastic, and I think, you know, Wendy and I have talked about it, we're enthusiastic about being able to, you know, combine, we'll be combining them, but being able to provide services to them, and, you know, making sure that we're doing, we're not duplicating efforts, and that we're working together.
Oh, that's great.
The playing field, oh, on a happy note, and I probably should have had him here, and I thought about this afterwards, Brian Griswold, I think you all know Brian, he's been working for the town for many, many years, well, Brian is going into semi-retirement.
Semi-retirement.
Yeah, he didn't want to just cut it off and gone, you know, the public works people, we don't like to just abruptly end anything, we want it sort of, well, smoothly, so it's a, I think it's a good thing.
Only gonna pave, like, some of the roads now?
Yeah, only one side.
One side.
One side, the other, or maybe just the middle, leave the edges alone, and we're only, we're only gonna plow one side of the road.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Saves money.
Yeah.
Anyway, Brian's gonna, Brian's gonna be with us for another six months, but his schedule's gonna be reduced back to twenty-four hours a week, except on snow weeks, and, and he, I think it's a good thing, because we're making, you know, there's a lot of new people coming on, Mike, you know, Mike O'Hern is just here as the public works director, and I tell you, Brian's been very key to me, and I think it's, instead of just having Brian leave, and when Mike gets here, he's gonna spend time with Mike, helping Mike get familiar with the projects and what's going on in town, he's also gonna be doing some work closely with the, he's gonna be instrumental in hiring his replacement, training that person, and then working also with the, with the grounds department to help them through some issues there, and then, and through the capital season, and once spring comes, I think he's going to decide to go mull on and relax, but so I want to let you know he's gonna do that.
For him, how many years is that? What's he got?
I know it's an excessive thirty.
Excessive thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Doing a long time. High Road Bridge is coming along, I do have some concerns, but I expressed that to the contractor last week, and I, and so, they are, they are moving right along, and they have assured me they will have this done and paved by the end of the construction season.
What are your concerns?
My concern's that they're behind schedule. I'm not concerned about the work, I'm concerned that they're behind schedule, and I understand that the weather's been bad, but also, we gave them, they originally signed the contract, which was last fall, we gave them, we allowed them to wait till spring to start the construction, and I told them to use that time to buy, buy, get, get the casting done, get everything ready, and prep to start, right, and the spring came, and I feel they delayed a little bit at the beginning, and now, you know, now, now, like I said, the weather's holding off, my feeling is, they, they should have used that kind of the beginning, so, I'm pushing them to, to be done before the end of the paving season, I have actually contacted the paving contractor to see if they're available and things, so we, we're pushing to get this done, but I want to make sure it's done also right, that we don't, just, but we're, Mike, I know Mike's been out there this week several times looking at the work that's going on. Savage Hill, if you're going down there, you'll see that we're, we are eliminating that pump station, that'll reduce the operating cost for the sewer system, there's a, there's a gravity line in the old Pistol Creek, well, of course, so we're eliminating the, the pumps, the pump system, it will all have to go by gravity, so that's being taken care of this week. The vestibules, this is another one, you've heard a lot about the vestibules, if you remember, I did say to you, I thought it would, I did not think it was gonna be ready, and that would take, you know, quite a bit of time, it would go into the, into the school year, and possibly next summer. Well, contractors, and they're, they're telling us that they can't, it's not the contractor, it's the supplier of the, of the vestibules themselves, the storefronts, and they're saying, and they've been going back and forth and giving us dates, and they're not meeting those dates, I met with Doug Sol today, and I told him, I want them to give us a date, and if you're not gonna make the date, I'm fine if you're not gonna make the date, just tell me you're not gonna make the date, and we'll cut, we'll, we'll limit the contract, we'll find another contractor or supplier, somebody will give us a date. They did call back, Doug doesn't have it in writing, but he said that he called me at four o'clock, wanted to report to the council, that they did agree to give us a firm date in a letter, and we will have that tomorrow, if I get that, I will PDF it to you all, so you can see that. I know you're getting questions on it, and so I want to make sure that you have some answers if somebody asks you about that. And the right way to do this is to do Willard School first, because that's the one that they use for the summer programs, and then do the other four schools simultaneously, starting as soon as school's out. But the right thing to do is have the vestibules, the storefronts available sitting there, so there's no delay. Elton Road, we have a show cause hearing next, next Monday, I believe.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, thank you. And the pipelining project for the, for the Belgium Brook is, is going along, it got delayed a little bit due to high water, that one, I have to say, you know, a sewer line when you're working on it in flooded areas is not a good thing, but they are moving along, they made some, made some good progress this week, and that's, that's progressing pretty much on schedule.
Any mention of removal of political signs by town employees?
You want me to discuss that?
Yeah.
Sure, we talked about it last, about-
I wouldn't, I've been on the town.
Okay, what, what happened is, we have, we had put out, prior to the political season, we had put out our guidelines on Facebook and on our town website, and, and we had actually, during the summer, I think you knew we removed a couple of signs because of, of issues. We talked to planning and zoning, we had received some complaints about it, so we asked, we were asked, we said, okay, we have our policy, we published the policy, so I talked to Mark Azakowski, and I said, Mark, we know, they're not meeting our requirements, Mark, I said, I want any signs that are not compliant, and I don't care what signs they are, they don't have to be political, if they don't meet our sign policy, remove them. And so, yeah, I think it was about two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, they did take down a bunch of signs, I did get a call from one candidate, I did talk to him, he was very polite, and we talked about it, and he was okay with it, I explained to him, it was gonna be universal, it could be a political sign for one party or the other, it could be a spaghetti dinner sign, I said, I told, I asked them to remove them if they weren't compliant, we also went out and helped them, because they were gonna, wanted to put them back, but they weren't sure what the street line was, Dave Thorne went out and marked the street line, you'll see some pegs in the ground with some flags, so we told where the street lines were. As part of that, there was discussion that we did not talk to DOT, we had talked to DOT prior to getting that, Mark has a, I believe he has a voicemail from DOT, telling them if they're on state roads, that they should be taken down.
And was it all one political party?
No.
It wasn't?
No, no, it was not, Peter.
Okay.
As I said to-
Can you just jot it down for next month, which signs were watched, that you took down?
Sure.
Okay. And who complained?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that it?
That's it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jack. So, special committee reports, I don't think we've had any, we've got, obviously, two on Thursday, report on those next time, the ordinance and the playing field. So, counselor communications. Anything?
So, we attended the, the joint meeting with the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance, and we discussed our priorities, but one of the things we discussed was armed school security, or school security in general, and one of my, and a couple others, hope was that we could get armed school security at each and every one of the schools. My proposal would be, and I'll just go real quick, it would be a retired police officer, or trooper, or federal agent, who would be armed, they would operate under the capacity of the police department, at the discretion of the police department, this way, they could have interoperability and training in case of a, an incident that would require that, they could have police radios, they would be sworn police officers carrying guns.
Police are bored and employed.
I'm sorry?
Police or bored and employed.
Well, the armed security would technically be a special police officer sworn in, but they would be operating under the police department, working at the Board of Ed, or working at the school, so similar to North Haven, they just implemented a new program, they hired four retired officers, and their work schedule's nine months, which coincides with the school schedule, and the benefit to that is they're sworn, they have police powers, so they carry guns, and they're also beneficial to the police department for patrol augmentations during off-hours, they could work as traffic duty at the Berlin Fair, or any other incidents that require extra police presence, that, that would be my proposal, because there's nothing better than having someone who's armed, and who's properly trained and professional in our schools protecting our children, that, that remains to be discussed, that's just my, my opinion, so, that's all I have.
Now, would they be paid out of the school board, or out of the police?
I don't know, that's a good question, I mean, that's something we can talk about.
That seemed to be the bugaboo last time.
But they're- That's our, yeah, that's-
Go ahead, Mark.
That's our, I mean, that's our discussion, hopefully, in fact, I was gonna ask you, Jack, if, I know when we left that meeting the other night, that, that meeting was for priorities, and the two priorities I heard from everyone were, obviously, the fire department radios, you have to make sure that they, they work, and whatever we have to do to fix that system and school security, we're talking about the vestibules, but, but the armed, the guards, the, the security personnel are the next thing, so, I think Matt Tenza said he would try and set something up with just a small group, you know, maybe with the superintendent.
A meeting with the superintendent, we have, we have regular scheduled meetings now?
Maybe asked.
And I'll talk to, I'll talk-
Said in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll talk to him about scheduling that meeting.
Because we gotta, you know, we, we want to move forward, we gotta move forward, I, I also found out that Glastonbury has armed officers too, so, because there didn't seem to be a lot of schools, but I was talking to somebody, said they're armed, all their officers too, so, I, I don't know where they lie, but, and the other discussion, Peter, is, is where the, where the funding will go, whether it's Department sixty-one, town side, whether it's the police department, whether it's the Board of Ed's funding, so that, that's to be discussed, I think, just where the funding will lie. I don't think, from what I heard, or have heard from Mr. Benigni, that, you know, I don't think, I don't think anybody necessarily cares, we want to kind of do it in the, the best place, we can stick to funding, the, the goal is to get the officers in the school.
Yeah, I believe Kevin Delaney sent a note out to everybody, if he hasn't, he was going to, there's some, there's some discussion, we, you know, we originally had talked about putting the funding in Department sixty-one, there is some discussion about if it's in Department sixty-one, who does the, who do, the funds belong to the town, or, you know, the off-funds reported, belong to the town, but those funds report to the council as opposed to Board of Ed, and there'll be some discussion about, you know, the VNA right now works that way, so there's some, some discussion about who would control the funds, Kevin was gonna send a note out, and I think that's part of the discussion, as we go forward, get some more clarity on, on that, there seems to be some discussion about who, who would control the funds, and how they would be administered. Normally, at Department sixty-one, the town administers the funds.
Right. And/or if it went to the police department, it'd be the way.
If you were gonna try to make these people sworn officers for the town of Berlin, wouldn't that come under the Berlin Police Union then?
If we did that plan, yeah.
Wouldn't that be a whole nother?
Yes.
Well, that falls under the town council side, but goes through the, through the-
Police commission.
Police commission.
I mean, we gotta figure it out, Charlie, I, you know, that's just, I mean, that's a proposal by Alex, and, I mean, I, you know, I, we have to see what the Board of Ed and superintendent want, I think initially, from what we heard, I've heard, we've talked about it for a while now, that, you know, I don't think Mr. Benigni is necessarily in favor of arming the school security personnel, I think the other school of thought is that what is an unarmed officer gonna really do, I, you know, just with my experience and Alex's, I don't think it's gonna do-
I don't have any experience in law enforcement, I don't defer to you guys, you have the years in the, in the field. I know the unions tend to get a little edgy when you get into their territory and try to use non-union people, so, maybe something considered.
Yeah, I mean, I don't-
Many, many unions, police unions in general are in support of this, because you're creating a new job classification, and it's essentially a special police power, it's a part-time, nine, nine-month position.
I understand what you're trying to do, and it would be economically feasible, more feasible, but I'm just saying, if you want to operate under the police department, since they're gonna be sworn officers, I would think they'd want to be collecting union dues on these people, so we have to make sure we clear it with all of that.
Yeah, we would, but that, I don't think that's the North Haven plan, North Haven plan is their, I don't know what they're calling them.
Super numeraries, we did an MOU with the union, no, no objection.
And that's one plan, and then there's other plans where there are, I think Glastonbury, I believe the officers are under the Board of Ed, so they're armed and they're under the Board of Ed, you know.
Now, what kind of security do we give the school buses?
Well, you know, we don't have, we can't put an officer on every bus, yeah, well, I mean, I, I think if we look at where the unfortunate violence has occurred, it's been in, in the, in the school, so I think that's, you know, where we need to start, yeah, I think that's what we need to do, and, and we need to get going on it, and, and we can, you know, but before we start, wherever road we go down, it would be not, we just want to try and get everybody on the same page, so, even if we, I, I don't think there's any, I, I don't think there's any, I, I think the, Mr. Benigni's agreed that whether the officers are armed or not, they would be retired law enforcement. So, if for some reason we start with unarmed, if we need to, if we decide to go to armed officers, then they would be the same people, so we wouldn't have to worry about that, you know, um, if that's where, how we go, it's just, we just have to-
I think that creates difficulty, though, in job, in changing job classifications.
Yeah.
When you bring them in under the Board of Ed, or their budget, and then you change them, I mean, if you have an armed officer, you want to have them with an appropriate uniform to be clearly distinguished.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, you know.
No, I mean, I, I think, I think, I mean, I, I think we would-
Again, it was something to discuss.
We'll figure out, I, I think before we go, we gotta figure out where the funding will lie.
Even former especially, I would bring police chief for the-
Yeah, we will.
Police commission into it, early on.
Yeah, we're, that's what we gotta do quickly, but, but, I mean, I, and I agree with it, we, we, I don't, we won't change, in other words, to wherever they come in, whether they're coming under the Board of Ed, they're coming under the Department sixty-one, or they're coming under the police department, they'll stay there. If they start unarmed, then they start unarmed. If they don't, they don't. I mean, that, you know, we can, I mean, I think we should decide that upfront, but if we can't, you know, it's a community, then we can at least start them. So, somebody is in the schools, because it's not covered, you know, there's no one in the three elementary schools, and, uh, the police departments, the police department is down on officers, and, you know, they may, from time to time, have to take one of the SROs out of, probably starting with McGee, they're gonna try and leave the one in the high school all the time, but, you know, again, depending upon their manpower needs, right, so, hence, but, yeah, we, we gotta, we gotta work it out, but I hope, you know, we work it out quickly now. We've been talking about it for a while, so we have to get everybody together, and if we could just start with a small group and try and get on the same page and move forward, that'd be great. So, that, that was a lot of discussion the other night, uh, as one of the priorities. I don't know what the, I don't know what the other priorities really were, do we got, I know we did get a little bit sidetracked with school security, which is important, but-
Right, I mean-
Right, I don't know what the other priorities were from everyone, these are the two big ones, right?
The fire radios.
Fire radios were one, and, and the school security was, I think, you know, on par with the fire radios, obviously, but, I don't, you know, we'll have to, have some more discussion with the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed with whatever other priorities are this budget year, so. Any other comments from anyone? So, we'll close the, uh, the council communications, we'll just have a motion to accept the minutes from the October second meeting.
Motion to accept the Tuesday, October second, twenty eighteen, town council meeting minutes.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Staying on that, I was absent.
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, so, those pass, uh, and, uh, motion to adjourn?
No move.
Uh, second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.